Thank you.
Hello and welcome. My name is Jennifer Oliver and I am the president of the Dearborn, Dearborn Heights League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan national organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government. The League never supports or opposes candidates or political parties. Membership is open to everyone aged 16 years or older. We are holding this candidate forum ahead of the upcoming general election on November 8. This forum is for a full-term seat on the Crestwood Public Schools Board of Education. The candidates are Nadia Berry, Has Baydun, and Najah Janun. This program is presented and produced as a public service by the League of Women Voters. It is an opportunity for candidates to express their views related to their candidacy. The LWV does not certify any candidate's responses to questions as accurate, and voters are encouraged to fact-check information shared at the forum. For additional information on today's candidates, please visit the League's online voter guide at vote411.org. Tonight's forum is being conducted virtually on October 3 through the Zoom platform, and the recording that you are watching has been released in its entirety. The League of Women Voters wants every eligible voter to inform themselves and to vote. If you want an absentee ballot, contact your city clerk's office. If you aren't sure whether or not you are registered to vote, or whether your absentee ballot has been issued or recorded, please visit the Michigan Voter Information Center at MI.gov/vote. Now, I am delighted to introduce the moderator of tonight's forum, Laura Limanese.
Hello. Today is Monday, October 3, and we are recording this program in its entirety via the Zoom platform. As always, the League of Women Voters is not responsible for the views expressed by the candidates. The candidates have agreed to the following. The first candidate to speak has been determined randomly. Thereafter, the order of responses will be rotated. Each candidate will have two minutes to make an opening statement and one minute to answer each question. We will end with each candidate having one minute to make a final statement. The League timekeeper is Alicia Missouri, and she will give a 15-second warning to cue the candidates to bring their answers to a close, and will raise a card and say "stop" to notify the candidate when their time expires. The questions were determined by a League committee. Time will not allow for all questions to be asked. If you have more questions, we encourage you to contact the candidates whose information is available online at vote411.org. The candidates have also, the candidates also have written responses to questions posed by the League, available also on vote411.org. There are seven members of the Crestwood Public Schools Board of Education. Four of them have terms that are expiring at the end of this year. There are two school board races on the ballot this election for residents living in the Crestwood School District, a full-term race and a partial-term race. Each race has two open positions. The full-term race has two open position, two open positions that expire in six years on December 31, 2028. The partial race has two open positions that expire in two years on December 31, 2024. This is the candidate form for the Crestwood Public School Board of Education, full term. There are three candidates running for two open positions. The candidates are Nadia Berry, Has Baydun, Najah Janun. The candidates have been asked to make a two-minute opening statement, and we will begin with Ms. Berry.
Thank you for the introduction, and hello and good evening to everybody. I'd like to start out, my name, of course, is Nadia Berry. I'm a, I've been a resident of the district for over 23 years. I have three children, two who have attended the district. One is now attending Madonna University, and the other is attending Mercy for nursing. And my third is a veteran who served in Iraq for two years and also went into education. I come from a family of public service. I have two brothers who are with Wayne County. One is the undershare for the county, and the other is the director for homeland security for Wayne County. It's our passion. We've been, you know, my parents have been still giving back, and this is how we give back. I work actually for Dearborn Public Schools. I've been there for over 27 years, and it has given me a large, I should say, a huge background in education to know, you know, what to expect, what not to expect, the questions to ask. So I feel like I have been in the trenches. So to go on again, you know, this is my passion. I will be finishing out my first term. I was voted on. I am the only incumbent. So I was voted on, and I am finishing out my first six years, and hopefully I'll have the opportunity to be back in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baydun?
Thank you. My name is Has Baydun. I'm currently the vice president of the Crestwood School Board. I was appointed back in November of 2021 by my peers. I moved into this district in 2009. We bought our first house here. My wife and I, Rita, as a parent of three in this, in the district, I'm extremely passionate about dedication and to the success of Crestwood Schools, to its students also. I coach football here in the district. I do a lot of mentorship. I work for General Motors. And just to elaborate, elaborate on that a little bit, working for a premier company like General Motors, I understand the importance of diversity and inclusion, and also how valuable it is to celebrate our diversity in this district. During my career, I've been given many opportunities to travel, both near and far, and see global markets as well. That provides a great background to understand fiscally on how a school district should be run, and also the diversity portion that we look at. If you travel, you see the different ethnicities, you see the different folks that are working to try to make this world a better place. Serving on the board, it has been a true honor and a learning experience for myself, but it also allows me to strive to help govern the role through collaborative stakeholder input and also thoughtful questioning for a long-term vision setting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Janun.
Hi. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys because you guys are giving us a platform that for us to have the opportunity to allow others that may not have other, have an opportunity to hear us, get to know what are, you know, where we are and where we come from. So thank you to you guys. So again, my name is Najah Janun, and I am a resident, I've been a resident of the City of Dearborn Heights for almost 34 years. I have raised my four children here where they've attended school. My two oldest are 20, he'll be 21, and he is attending University of Detroit Mercy, where he received pretty much a full ride scholarship to play men's soccer there. And he is studying biology with the hopes of going to med school afterwards. And then my other son is at Henry Ford, taking classes there. And my other two are an eighth grader at Riverside Middle School and junior at Crestwood. So I still have children here as well and looking to continue serving. When I first got involved, I was advocating for transparency and equity and just really, I guess I'll stick with transparency, probably the biggest issue for myself. So I was attending school board meetings, literally every single meeting where I was helping to keep residents informed with our previous administration. And this kind of just fell in my lap where a vacancy became available, and it just was, allowed me an opportunity to have a seat at the table where I may not otherwise have found myself, but I'm grateful for the opportunity because it's allowed me to see really what, what you, what the residents don't really see, the things that are, you know, the decision-making and keeping yourselves informed so that you can help our kids receive the education that they need. I'm, sorry, this, this is all, no matter how much I do this, I'm.
Thank you. Now we'll begin with our questions. All candidates will be given one minute to answer each question, and we'll begin with Mr. Baydun. What do you see as one of the most important issues facing the Crestwood District and School Board right now, and what solutions would you propose to address the issue?
Thank you. So basically, take a step back and look at things from a holistic point of view. Right now is comfort, right? So we see everything happening across the nation in regards to safety and security for our children. That's probably the most important task that, although we haven't had, and God forbid willing, that we don't have an issue, but as soon as you get comfortable as a district or an organization or even a company, you, you keep yourself susceptible, liable to issues and vulnerable, vulnerability. Security has to be a revolving door where we continue to install improvements to ensure that we're on top of whatever it is that we may face in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Janun?
Can you read the question, please?
Sure. What do you see as one of the most important issues facing the Crestwood District and School Board right now, and what solutions would you propose to address it?
So as a district, we have, we've come a long way when it comes to the social and emotional aspect of, and issues that are facing our children coming out of COVID. We've, we aren't there yet, but we're working on providing them the resources when it comes to our school psychologists, restorative practices, just having the support. Ultimately, I think, looking from the top down, we need to ensure that our staff is supported so that they can then provide the support to our students that are needed. Also, again, I mean, when, when you look from the top down, if the teachers don't have what they need, and I know it all comes down to finances at the end of the day, when we have, when we need, we have the proper funding, we can do anything with it. But we, we're working on our, we're working on our social, emotional health with our students, and that is really what I find to be the biggest.
Thank you, Mrs. Berry. Could you unmute yourself, please?
I apologize. Yes, one of the most pressing issues for me is the data and where we are as far as aligned, you know, with how our kids are progressing, and I'm not really thrilled with what I'm seeing. But again, you, when a one person can't do that alone, along with, of course, security and social, emotional. So I would like us to take more of initiative to start looking at the data and getting the data, so we know where we need to put our efforts, you know, to what to push for. That is the most important. We go to school to learn, to become better citizens, to make a difference in the world. So that is one of my number one reasons, you know, things to see. The other, of course, is the social, emotional, which I was, I was a huge, it was a huge component for me to push for. We've come a long way. We started out with no social workers. We had one, no school psychologist.
Thank you. So our next question will go to Ms. Janun first, and it is, how would you go about alleviating staff, staff shortages throughout the district?
Oh, that's a tough one, because I think ultimately it comes down to funding and all to, you know, we, and, and again, with staff not feeling supported and staff not having the resources that they need to be able to support our children. I feel like teachers all around don't feel appreciated, but Crestwood's doing a good job and I'm working on that. But I think that when you can provide them the resources and the support that they really need, we're, we're working on being a true PLC, you know, community with our, with our staff and through collaboration with our, with each other and the teachers and the district itself. Ultimately, when the staff feels supported, they will then reach out to their peers and, and hopefully recruit people and, and know that they are truly respected and appreciated at Crestwood Schools.
Thank you, Mrs. Berry. Go ahead and unmute, please.
Sorry. Okay, for staff shortages, I know that we are one of the most competitive as far as subpay. So we've been very, you know, we've been looking for different ways to recruit, to bring in. I know that we have gone as far as having building subs, so we can retain and make sure that we do have people on staff that are going to cover these classes that need to be covered. So I think that we are doing a good job as far as that's concerned. We have been retaining a lot of subs that are returning and are able to work for us and keep the district moving along as need be as far as covering the classrooms.
Thank you.
By being very competitive. We are very competitive in pay.
Thank you, Mr. Baydun.
Well, first of all, I feel like this question is right up my alley. My wife is a teacher, and the most important thing I think we need to look at is the number of students in the classroom first. Taking that into consideration, make sure the staff itself, the current staff, is utilized fairly, right? I don't believe that we should have lopsided discussions and where some of the staff is working, you know, OT just to stay afloat and the other portion isn't. And then also work with the administrators on incentives for staffs that the district can afford. So first of all, you have to look at your budget, and I don't believe just sitting on a pile of money is correct. I think if the district can afford it, we need to incentivize our staff to ensure that they're taken care of, because you're only as good as your staff at that point, just like any other organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will go to Mrs. Berry first. What would your role as a school board member be in preventing discrimination in the Crestwood School District and also addressing potential allegations of discrimination?
My role as a school board member would be to be very inclusive of everyone. Don't count anyone out. It doesn't matter what your background, what your diversity is. We've come a long way. When I started, I had to, you know, I was actually the first Arab American to be on Crestwood School Board, and it was interesting, you know, what people don't know about you and how you have to let them understand and become their friend and let them see that you're just like them. So to be accepting of everyone, whether, you know, you, others on the board don't want that or not, everybody should have an equitable and should, they should also be inclusive in everything. It's not just one-sided. Everybody should have a fair chance. Learning from myself, if my children are not part of the top tier, then they didn't get the services, which is unfair.
Thank you, Mr. Baydun.
So in my current nine-to-five job, I work for General Motors, as I said earlier. GM is really focusing, moving toward being the most all-inclusive corporation in the world. It's a very diverse company, and we continue to take continuous learning in inclusion and diversity. Having said that, I believe our staff needs continuous training here in the district for diversity and inclusion, but not only the staff or the administration does it stop there. I believe the board needs training in diversity and inclusion, and also the students need training in diversity and inclusion. This is something that can be brought to their attention, because the more they hear it, the more, it's like practice, the more you practice or study for a test, it's in the back of your mind before any actions are taken. Sometimes that training and best practices can be a part of the curriculum as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Janun.
So I think first and foremost, you, as a district, we need to not ignore it. We need to pay attention when we notice that there is something, when there, when there's discrimination happening. And we need to, again, train, train our staff, train our teachers down to our custodians and, yes, our students, to listen for the cues, the comments, and pay attention to others' experiences as well, and to encourage staff to report any type of discrimination that they may see. Although we know that that might be hard to do, especially against a fellow peer, but the only way to stop it is to, to pay attention and to not ignore it. And we need to encourage discussion, and we need to train our students as well, and put them in situations where they, they know how to respond when something does happen in front of them, and they're not afraid to, to say something.
Thank you. The next question will be presented to Mr. Baydun first. What can be done to improve overall student health, including mental, social, and emotional health?
Thank you. First and foremost, student health as a whole, I believe continuing to stick to our laws of governance and what is offered for physical health, like lunch, vending machines, things of that nature. We need to continuously understand what is provided to the children. That's something that I believe doesn't come to the board enough. We need to oversee that and ensure, of course, every now and then, all children deserve a treat, but within limitations. Regarding social and emotional health, I think it's very important to recognize, recognition early, right? We need to recognize students struggling, maybe students that haven't been, have been outspoken in the past and really recently are not. Teachers need to be trained to understand that that child might need help and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Janun.
So first of all, when it just, when it comes to physical health, we need as a district to promote quality health education, implementing systems that will help to increase access to, you know, healthcare as well, encouraging our teachers to provide our students that time outdoors even throughout the day. And that isn't only just for physical health. That break is also, has a lot to do with their mental health, breaking up their day so where they're not, I mean, we can barely sit through an hour meeting sometimes without feeling, you know, fidgety. So allowing them to have that break and giving them access to things that, that are not, that they may not, some, some children may not have when they go home. We, as a district, you know, from the PTA perspective, we purchased new basketball rims, so allowing those kids to go outside, play, and not just sit down and and work, and that's it. And, and also for mental health, we know issues with bullying.
Thank you, Mrs. Berry.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. What can be done to improve overall student health, including mental, social, and emotional health?
Okay, I, like I said prior, when I first started with the district, we had one social worker across the district, one school psychologist across the district. And that, to me, was a huge no-no, again, because I come from Dearborn Schools and I had high expectations. So we, I did, I did push. We are now at, one at least at every building, two at the middle school and the high school. We have our social workers, our school psychologists, PBIS, and these are the, that is what you need to help students cope, to cope, especially with everything that has gone on within the last few years. Children need somebody to be able to walk into and sit and talk to. We've, we've added counselors. Everything that we can do, we are doing, and we're still pushing for more. So the resources are there for students, for someone to be able to walk into their office and talk to them. Thank you.
Thank you. So this question will go to Ms. Janun first. The American Academy of Pediatrics recommends that middle and high school start no earlier than 8:30 a.m. Is this a policy you would support for our students?
So from a mother's perspective of teenagers, I think that starting later might actually be beneficial for our students. There's a reason studies are done, you know, at a certain age, we, we struggle to get our kids to bed. I could put my kids to bed, you know, by 8:30 when they were younger. At this point, they're in bed before, I mean, I'm in bed before, before they are. So their, their bodies and the way that their brains work are totally different when they're younger. You see, again, just from, from an adult perspective, I no longer function the way that I used to when I was younger. So I can see that really being something that would benefit them, and I, I personally would support them starting a little bit later.
Thank you, Mrs. Berry.
Okay, well, if the American, American Academy of Pediatrics is recommending it, and they've done the studies, then I would definitely say that is something that I would consider. I do work with early childhood and with all the, you know, research that's being done with early childhood. We say that four-year-olds need 13 hours of sleep. That's how exhausted they get throughout the day. They need their play. They, you know, whether the students want to go out or not, even if it's 20 degrees, we still are forced because that's what licensing requires. And that should be the same for the older kids, because they need to release the stresses, they need to be outdoors, they need to get that exercise. So definitely, I would recommend starting later if that was something that was, that the district wanted to do. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Baydun.
I believe one of the most important aspects of being, having a role in leadership is the, the best tool someone can have is to listen, right? And I don't believe, I'm an expert in this specific field, so that's something that I need to lean on, the same organizations that you mentioned earlier, right? These pediatric organizations and whatnot. So I definitely agree with my peers on this one, that if the data's coming and it shows that it's more beneficial for the students and children, then I'm a definite supporter of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think this will be our last question, and it will go to Mrs. Berry first. What is your position on book banning, and how would you ensure that any effort to remove materials from school libraries or media centers undergoes a fair and transparent process?
First of all, book banning is not something that I would push for, what, what, but books, what we have in our district is we have a curriculum committee that decides, you know, there's a committee of teachers, they're the experts, they know what material they need to teach. This is their place of expertise. They bring their recommendations to the board, has a curriculum committee that would decide if it's a yes or a no. And I personally would support what my colleagues, you know, wanted, if it's going to be inclusive of everyone. I don't feel that we should be picking and choosing. I, I, I don't want us to be forcing kids to read what they don't want. And I think that parents, if they had a concern, and they should bring it to the district, but I also.
Thank you, Mr. Baydun.
I believe that, you know, this is a wide-range question, right? And the way I would look at it is, you know, first of all, we have state and government and county regulations on what kind of curriculum needs to be met for state qualifications. That's number one. Number two, you could look at it a different way, which I'm leaning toward, is a classification of books, right? You can have a classification of books in the elementary, but when you get to the high school, you can have maybe a more open classification of books. Definitely, I, I know where this question is stemming from the, you know, right now, and, you know, I definitely don't want pornographic pictures in an elementary school in a book, right? Currently, so there's a wide range of how you can look at this, but it's definitely has to be tailored to the audience as well. This is why we have PG-13 and things of that nature for movies as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Janun.
So I think we all know it's been quite a controversial topic, and I was recently asked this by, by a parent. And my personal opinion is, no, I don't believe books should be banned from schools. I do believe that when you're dealing with minors and you're dealing with different people from different backgrounds, and sometimes they may not understand, they may not understand what it is that their child is learning, that we be open as a district to have those conversations with them and listen to their concerns, and also give them the option, because no matter what, at the end of the day, we are never all going to agree and believe the same way. But as a school district, we do have. But as a school district, we do have, we do have certain guidelines that we have to follow. But we also need to, to listen to our parents and we need to give them the option to say if something, if they feel that something is appropriate for their child or not. Because if we ban anything, if we go to banning anything, where does it stop? So you've got to be open to hearing all, all.
Thank you. Now it's time for candidates to make a one-minute closing statement and we will get, begin with Mr. Baydun.
Well, first of all, I want to thank the League for holding this forum. I also want to thank my peers, Mrs. Barry and Mrs. Janoon, for a great discussion. One thing I want to leave in mind for everyone is the power to listen, to listen to the community, to also extending out your helping hand in areas where you see in need, but also empowering the administration to get these kids and students and staff to the next level. I believe that we're only as good as our weakest link. And when I say that, I'm talking about actual governance and guidelines. I believe we need to continue to strive to be inclusive and also accept diversity for what it is. With that being said, I appreciate everyone's time and effort and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Janoon, please.
So I'd also like to thank everybody. I think this is, you know, it's a, it's a great opportunity for, again, for, for people to have the chance to see and hear us as candidates. I, you know, again, I was active in the district prior to joining the board in August of two thousand and twenty. And like I'm sure my peers, this is, being on the board is a great responsibility. It's something that, you know, you never quite understand what it is that you're getting yourself into until you are, you know, knee-deep in it and you, you realize what a task that, you know, is at hand. You're, we're responsible for fourth, over four thousand children and their education. And ultimately, we as a district, and I know everybody else feels the same way, we want the best for our students. We want the best for our families and we want the best for our staff. We want to come together and we want a community where everybody feels safe, equitable education for all and for everybody to thrive. And for, I'd love to see our district become a model.
Thank you, Mrs. Barry. Can you unmute yourself, please?
Sorry about that. I was having a hard time. So the reason that I initially ran for school board is because I felt that their education over at Crestwood was not equitable to everyone. Not everybody had a fair chance. I felt that, you know, like I said prior, it was the top that were getting all the attention and then everybody else was just following along, whether they made it, they made it, whether they didn't, nobody was really following through. And that hurt my heart. And that's when I said, this has got to stop. And so that's why I jumped in the race and I feel like I have made a difference with that. Now we have equitable, everybody has an equal chance and it's inclusive. If they want to do something that they couldn't do before, they can do it now. And the last thing I want to say is, thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this on. I know it takes so much and I appreciate your time for including us on this. Thank you.
On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Dearborn, Dearborn Heights and the communities we serve, we want to thank the candidates for participating in the forum. We appreciate the commitment it takes to run for office. To voters, please remember to vote. Every vote matters, especially in local races. The polls will be open on Tuesday, November eighth, from seven A M to eight P M. Absentee ballots are now available from the city clerk's office and are available to any registered voter for any reason. In-person voting at the clerk's office has begun. It's possible to visit the clerk's office during office hours to request an absentee ballot, vote in the office and turn it in all in one visit. For more information, visit votefouroneone.org and mi.gov/vote. This forum has now ended. Thank you.